Namo tassa bhagavato arahato samma sambuddhasa. Namo tassa bhagavato arahato samma sambuddhasa. Namo tassa bhagavato arahato samma sambuddhasa. This, we chant the saying which is: "We pay homage to the Buddha, the fully enlightened one, awakened one." It's a beautiful way to begin giving a discourse and a way of remembering the fully awakened Buddha. Start on morality and compassion, the teachings that are very basic in the Buddha's teaching. And morality is also used, you see it in other religions, like the Ten Commandments, the Five Precepts in Buddhism. And when we talk about morality, it's not to kill a human being, not to kill, you know, even babies inside fetuses. So it encompasses a lot of stages. Even when we have this euthanasia, it's very debatable because even then it's called a mercy killing. When we, you know, when we go to hospice, we do these services to people where sometimes the pain is so much that they want to die. And sometimes the doctors prescribe a morphine for the person to go to sleep. And it's a compassionate thing, but many people, you know, they would object to such, such, such way of ending life. But the quality of life for people at that stage is really very negligible, not a good quality of life because you see them suffering in their bed all day long and all night. They can't move and the assistants have to clean them up. A lot of people have to work to keep them going. So mercy killing is also kind of compassionate act, you could say. But when we, when we look at it from the Buddhist perspective, we are kind of in a, in a catch-22 situation or in a, you know, in a very shaky grounds because on the one you have compassion not to, not kill, but on the other hand you have compassion of relieving their sufferings, you know. So so hospice, yeah, hospice patients, I go to see them. They're a lot of suffering, they have cancer, cancer or some other ailments, heart disease. And so I do some chanting for them. I try to talk to them about their end of life process and how to move on to the next stage of their life, you know, eternal life. So in a way they have to relax because, you know, there's an endless lives in front of them. So just take it easy and don't worry too much. And on the other hand, what I find is a lot of people have a lot of regrets. You know, I should have done more spiritual work. I should have more meditated. I should have studied the Four Noble Truths. Now it's too late. And they are confused. So we just have compassion for that. So killing, it's a big thing because it requires a lot of volition, willpower to do that. The next one is not to steal, not to steal, you know, from anybody, not to embezzle, not to cheat on your taxes. You guys must be paying taxes and not to cheat. So it's a very, very deep precept also. And then sexual misconduct. Not to lie, not to take intoxicants like drugs, alcohol, painkillers, you know, like Tylenol, Anadine. They have a certain amount of alcohol, 8%, less than 8% or something. So if you, if you, you know, you take painkillers, there is a certain amount of tranquilizers for you. And so the precepts are basic to all religions, you know. And that's where the commonality of Buddhism ends with other religions because the other religions are god-based, artistic religions. Buddhism is more of help yourself and self-enlightenment. You have to do the work yourself. It's not something like grace of the Buddha or somebody will help you. We can only show you the path, you have to walk on it, okay? So that's the morality. Compassion in Buddhism is, you know, sending your, there's a meditation, compassionate meditation we do. Loving kindness, sending loving kindness vibrations throughout the universe. May everyone abide in well-being, may they be happy. So I will read the, that is why, you know, that is why we have to have laws, morality and compassion. These are laws. Spiritual laws, you could say, such as "I will refrain from intentional killing." The word refrain, it's very important. It tells you, you have to practice. You know, some people, you know, have difficulty in observing all the precepts, but we don't say it's a commandment. It's something you have to observe as a training rule. So it's not like a commandment that you just will be punished straight away, you know, if you don't observe like the intoxicant rule or the stealing rule, not to steal. Even if you kill someone in Buddhism, even if you kill someone and you practice the Four Noble Truths and practice the Eightfold Path and you walk on the path and achieve enlightenment, that is a possibility. It is not that once you kill someone or then there is no, no chance of you ever again to attain enlightenment because some people do it out of, you know, unintentionally, but, you know, just at the spur of the moment, not thinking, not realizing, and then they have remorse and regret. So there is a possibility even in that stage. That's where we do also, the Buddhist teachings are there also in prisons where we teach people to meditate. And then we see that they have a lot of remorse and when they meditate, everything comes out of them. In their mind, everything comes out. So slowly, slowly they realize what they have done. There's a nice video called "Doing Time Doing Vipassana." The 10-day Vipassana meditation courses. I don't know if you have it in Mexico, but it is, it is very, it goes deeper. It's like a surgery of the mind. It does the surgery. It's, you know, it's you do it yourself, as it were. And you see the prisoners, they cry. They have such a regret and remorse, even gang, gangsters, you know. They, they, they cry and break down. And some people, you know, when they're told that, okay, your time is up, you should now leave the prison. They say, no, we don't want to leave the prison. We want to stay and meditate. You know, society outside is crazy. So, you know, they, because they've got a lot of time in prison. They've got a lot of time to meditate, you know. So they, they have remorse, but then also the path is open to them. You know, even if they've murdered someone, the path is always open. Now is the only moment that they have, and we all have. Now is the only moment that we have because now, the moment now, is where we have control on everything, where we have power to do some things. The past, we cannot control. The future, we cannot control. But now we can control. And then if we control now, we control the future. We set up the future. So I will refrain from intentional killing because some people's nature, not everybody, is to kill. If it's not suitable for us, we will kill it. You can see this in the animal kingdom more and more because they have to survive to kill, survival of the fittest. So we So I hope people are not killing bugs anymore and appreciating that bugs help us to live. They contribute to our existence in some form or other. So that it's very important not to, not to generate that energy of killing, no matter how small the beings are. Now we are really taking on responsibility, which is good. We are taking the responsibility on ourselves. And we are responsible for our actions and we are responsible for our results. You know, the action is equal to reaction. The Newton's Law applies here. Newton's Law says if I push on the wall, the wall will push back on me. And it's the same thing in the law of karma. If, if I, if I create a certain volition, that volition has a resultant effect on me. So action is equal to reaction. So it's, nobody is going to punish you. We punish ourselves by our own actions, by our mental activity, by our mental volition. So that's very important to, to know. This is where we start to take certain amount of responsibility and a certain amount of compassion. We try to generate sympathy, kindness, compassion, all these beautiful mental factors. These beautiful mental factors create a beautiful mind. A beautiful mind generates a beautiful body, vibrations, and happiness ensues. So from small things, you know, if we take care of small things, then we slowly take care of the big things. So we all share the same kind of emotions. We fear death, we fear, you know, violence. Although some people are blunt, become blunt to that violence, but normally, normal people fear violence. So this is where we have compassion. We generate loving kindness and compassion. Suffering has to be investigated and how do we get out of suffering? And how do we generate happiness and bliss? Because there's no point if you just try to get out of suffering and just be normal, but then you also want some additional thing and that is happiness. So in the medical community, when the doctor treats a patient, he just brings them back from suffering and pain to so-called normal. But the so-called normal person is not happy person. So we try to bring them to a state of less pain, to no pain, and then from no pain to happiness. And we do all sorts of things. A lot of people do everything to try to generate happiness, but they find suffering and pain. So to understand, to investigate, we have to be, we are the apparatus, as it were. We are the experimental guinea pig. So we can try to analyze from the source. We are the source. Right, right, I understand. So if, if we need some creator god to give us all these rules or if there is a creator god, then who created, and he created the world and he gave the laws, then we have to see, we have to ask, who created the creator god? And then we have to ask, who created the creator god? Who created the god? So we have to, when we ask that, who created that? We have, we can go back, back and back and back. We can go a long way and keep asking. But in the Buddha's teachings, you know, it is experience that shows that if you kill someone, you suffer. If you steal something, you are creating suffering for yourself and for others. So this is a natural way of formation of laws that you can understand. And it's, if I, if I lie and I get caught, then I suffer because people will then punish me. If I commit sexual misconduct with my neighbor or someone's wife and the king catches me, they can, or the, you know, there is a court case and all that, then there's suffering. So these are laws that we see that is creating suffering. And so these are the laws that we, as humans, can set up just like the laws in a, in a society, you know, that the governments create for the well-being of society so that society doesn't break up or civil war or something happen. So we have these laws so that there is no, you know, tension and there is peace and people live in harmony. So these laws are kind of, you know, the morality laws are there so that we don't suffer and we don't feel and society benefits. So if I take intoxicant, drink and alcohol, then there's problems in the family. So if we don't take alcohol or drugs or this, then there is peace and harmony. So we can formulate these laws ourselves. We don't need somebody to give us these laws of not to kill, not to steal. We ourselves as humans create, can create these laws for the well-being of society, for the well-being of our minds. And the Buddha discovered these other stuff that he called, gives us eternal happiness. So once we understand the processes of, you know, the mind and the universal processes, then we can live in harmony. So every creature, every creature have a right to exist. And by giving them the right to exist, we ourselves find that we can exist as well. If you try to eliminate some kind of birds, then there's a production, food production goes down because the birds kill the insects that destroy the food. So in Russia, they killed a lot of sparrows and then they found that the sparrows were eating some kind of insects that were helping with the food production, keeping the bugs away. So we try to live in harmony with nature and then nature, it's kind of a reward for us. So when you're feeling like pain and cold, you know, you want to get rid of it. Sometimes you just try to manage it. When you feel like you don't want to do the housework, you see that, you, you see that I am blessed, I have a house. Many people are homeless, you know. Many people are homeless, they don't have, or, you know, some people's homes are burnt down and they have no home. And although they don't have much to clean after that, but, you know, it's suffering, more suffering. So we always have to look at it from a different point of view to see. So, yeah, that is a very, very, very good way to look at it. To investigate suffering. So then there is suffering. The second insight of the First Noble Truth comes, it should be understood, this suffering is to be investigated. And to investigate suffering, like we said dukkha, it's a very important word. It is very deep. And it's very deep to, it has a lot of different meanings, you know. There is mental dukkha and physical dukkha. So now see, people are actually looking at the world thinking that they are confused and miserable because they did not get a fair deal. So some people, you know, think suffering arises because, you know, of mistreatment and this and that. And that might be also true, but not everything that happens to us is from outside. We also create that, we are also the creators of that part of suffering. So the First Noble Truth, even if we had a very pretty miserable life, when we look at it, is not that much of a suffering which comes from outside, but we create it in our own minds. That is very important. Because, you know, in some countries like in Asia, you see poor people, but they are happy, very happy. You know, and when you see very rich people, but they're not happy, they're miserable. So it comes from the way we look at things. So this is an awakening in a person, an awakening to the truth of suffering. And it is the noble truth because it is no longer blaming the suffering that we are experiencing on others. Thus, the Buddhist approach is quite unique with respect to other religions because the emphasis is on the way out of suffering through wisdom. We are emphasizing in the Buddha's teachings, the way out of suffering is through wisdom and understanding enlightenment, insight, knowledge. So it's a freedom from all delusion rather than the attainment of some blissful states of mind or union with some external friend in the sky or ultimate, you know, self or something higher. In the Buddha's teaching, we see the mind as the highest in the whole universe. Nothing higher than the mind, the human mind. You know, we can react to life in two ways. Either we react with frustration and anger and resentment or we respond with silence and understanding. So there is mental suffering that we add to the physical suffering and then we create more and more. You know, and in your lives, you always get offended at work. You get upset because of X, Y, Z, the weather, the government, the politicians, you know, the tax people. So you are always going to get that. You're always going to be offended or slighted. There are many times in daily life when, you know, the reverse happens. Sometimes we get praises and all that. But mostly we get offended and upset and we feel annoyed or irritated just by the way somebody, you know, looks at us sometimes. So we, we, we do, we start with small things and we don't let small things upset us and bring suffering. Then we move on to bigger things where we find that, you know, now we are more conditioned to let go of things and not to be too mentally tortured by our reaction to it. So it, it is our, our, our way of looking at things that we can slightly change from suffering to non-suffering. Then we talk about pleasure and displeasure. Now that, you know, everybody seeks pleasure. You know, everybody tries to generate this pleasant, pleasant consciousness, pleasant states of mind. You know, there's freedom to do anything most, more, you know, a lot of freedom has been given to everybody. And it seems so nowadays than, you know, centuries before. Freedom for drugs, sex, travel and so on, anything goes, anything is allowed. Nothing is forbidden, you know. So the more the freedom we are given to do anything, the more selfishness we bring about in our lives. So we are not more happier, but we are more selfish nowadays. So pleasures and displeasures are part of this investigation and we investigate how much, you know, how much pleasures are enough pleasures? How much does exposed to all kinds of pleasures bring us closer to happiness? Because pleasures and happiness or pleasures and bliss are two things. Pleasures come from, you know, from the six outside objects. Bliss arises within us and it is independent of any objects. So rather than seeking after pleasure, it is important to seek after bliss. Because that way, we be, we learn to become unselfish. So then, when the sense of what I want, you know, the sense of what I want and what I think should and should not be arises and we wish to delight in all the pleasures of life, we inevitably get upset because life seems so hopeless, you know? Sometimes people, you know, commit suicide because they see that life is hopeless. I don't get what I want, what I think should and should not be arises. We wish to be having a delightful and pleasurable life. And when we don't find so many things that make us happy, then you know, we just go in a downward path. We just get whirled about by life. World means we get spinned around and around, just running around in states of fear and desire. And when we get everything we want, we will think that there is something missing, something incomplete yet. And that is true. When we, when we get everything we want, we still think that there is something missing in our lives, you know? So we think, oh, well, I have everything, a beautiful wife, a big car, a big company, lots of money in the bank, many family members, you know? And then still, people are not happy. Even if you are the richest man in the world, you're not happy. You have to get up and try to do tweets, ten, twenty tweets a day. You know, you just go and attack people. That shows you're not happy. You know, you just, all you do, once you become a richest man in the world is you start tweeting on the Twitter. You cannot relax, you cannot relax, see? So, so when, when there is that something missing, when we have everything, there is still suffering and that is this marvelous thing we call bliss. This state of enlightenment which is independent of anything else in the world. The Dhamma, that is what is one thing that is missing in, in life. And no matter what happens, no matter how many things you can accumulate, without that one thing, life doesn't have any meaning because, you know, it can all be taken away. And when you are a very rich person, you're always worried at night about your safety, your security, whether somebody will steal your money, whether your money will go down in the stock market or if you invest your money in Bitcoin or whatever you invest. So, good. So bliss is a beautiful state of mind that does not rely on external objects, does not rely on how much your bank account, how big your bank account is. Bliss swells within us without any of those. So there is this sense of suffering because something is lacking. Some kind of doubt or fear haunting us. So when you are the richest person in the world, then you want to live forever. But you can't because, you know, death is coming and you try to see if you can clone yourself, make another copy of yourself, try to preserve your cells, brains, you know, brain cells or something, something, but you're still suffering. So fear, fear arises, fear arises as you grow older and older because death comes. Death arises. But we don't have to be afraid of anything. Once you have insight and knowledge and understanding, then fear disappears. There is beauty outside and we try to take pictures and try to capture the beauty and wanting it and wanting it. And sometimes people suffer because they can't get enough. Wanting to hold everything, wanting to consume everything with the eyes. The eyes are the biggest thing in the universe because it can take everything inside. It can grab everything. But it's still dukkha. If you want to hold on to something which is beautiful because you don't want to be separated from it, that is suffering. So we try to take in all the sceneries when we go on a beautiful tour and we capture everything and we want everything to be permanent with us and then slowly, you know, we let go of it and that brings suffering. And also not wanting to be separated from things we like is suffering. When things are not going right or when things are slightly off, we always try not to make too much out of it, not to think too much about it and just gradually let go of those inconveniences or unsatisfactory situations. Scenery, things are as they are. That is very important to understand. Things are as they are and things are in such a way that we can grow. We can grow in our Dhamma practice. So situations that we meet unpleasant or inconvenient situation, when we learn from it, we can understand and develop a certain amount of compassion and understanding. Grasping is wanting to hold on to something we like. Grasping is wanting to get rid of something we don't like. That is also grasping. Or wanting to get something we don't have, which is longing. We long to have what we don't have and we don't get that, it's suffering. So sometimes we find a teacher that we want them to be perfect and it's not a, it's not a, it's not a bad thing, but it's our expectations there, see? Again, we want we want an enlightened master that also will kind of help us to enlighten right away. And so when, when that expectation doesn't arise in us, then we suffer. So we want that enlightened teachers or teachers to be what we like them to be. If they do something different, then we get upset and we carry that around. So we are projecting a lot of our ideas, we are projecting our wishes on to somebody else. And when they don't act the way they act, then there is suffering for us. So, so now we learn, we learn to live with nature and understanding. We learn that, you know, it's okay, you know, whatever my situation is, it could be worse. It could be worse, it could be worse five times more. There is no war, but it's, you know, when you are in the forest, there was no war. There's food, food is available. There's water available, there's shelter, there's medicine, everything is available. So we learn to see that we don't create suffering in the mind by overthinking the mind, by adding fuel to the fire. Your situation might not be perfect, one hundred percent perfect. You know, people around you might not be as you want, things might not be as you like, but still there is all the necessities of life. Food, shelter, clothing, electricity, internet connection. You know, internet connection is there. So everything is there and we don't make a big deal. So that's a very clear, I, understanding. In the Asian countries, we monks go on armed round with our arms ball. It's a ball that people put food in and monks have to go in the village every day. We cannot stop food at the monastery. We have to go out every day to be in contact with society to make the minimum contact with society. So we have to go with our arms ball. It's a ball that, you know, it's like a small stainless steel ball. And so people offer the, people offer the food as a form of generosity. It is like you, you are creating a generous state of mind. And people get a lot of happiness and joy by putting rice, maybe banana, honey and some other food in the bowl, you know, but we have to, we have to refuse because one of the monks' rule is not to take money. So then it creates a peaceful, harmonious society. The monks give, the, the people give food for the monk's body and the monks give food for the people's mind, as it were. So the teachings are, the teachings that we offer is like a food for the mind, for the people. So we create all this negativity in our mind. We create all the negativity and then we have to keep going with that negativity and we suffer. And it's consuming us. It's like a fire inside our mind, it burns us. And you know, anger, anger affects your metabolism, it affects your heart rate, it affects your the heart, actual heart and the stress that builds up from anger, it creates heart attacks or heart diseases. Stroke. So the, according to medical science, all these things have been proven that anger consumes or destroys our body. And anger is a state of mind, so it can be fixed. And these teachings are not outside our experience, you know? They are part of our experience. We, we, we work with experience, what we experience. We work with what we see and hear and perceive. So we work with perception and we work with feelings. And when we do that, then that's working with reality, not imagining, not speculating, not fantasizing, but working with realities. And when we work with realities, we make progress. So so these teachings are not outside of our experience. They are in fact reflection of our actual experience. So the Buddha's teachings are working with our daily experience, daily life. Not complicated intellectual issues. So really put effort, so really put effort into development rather than just getting stuck in a rut. How many times do you feel guilty about your abortion or the mistakes you have made in the past? Do you have to spend all your time just re degregating, degradating the things that have happened to you in your life? And indulging in endless speculation and analysis? Some people make themselves into such complicated personalities. If you just indulge in your memories and views and opinions, then you will always stay stuck in the world and never transcend it in any way. So to, so to transcend the world, you have to learn to let go of the burden. All of us are carrying a burden. We are carrying ourselves. We as human beings are carrying ourselves and that's a lot of burden. You can let go of this burden if you are willing to use the teachings skillfully. Tell yourself, I'm not going to get caught in this anymore. Tell yourself, I refuse to participate in this game. I'm not going to give in to these moods, you know, the moods that people have. The emotions, you have to tell yourself, I am not going to get caught into these emotions that arise and the emotions are like ocean waves. They get you up and down, up and down all the time and there is no rest. So it's a skillful way. If you indulge in your memories and views and opinions, then you will always stay stuck in the world and never transcend it in any way. You can let go of this burden if you are willing to use the teachings skillfully. So you have to be able to learn the teachings skillfully. And for that, you have to learn the teachings. And so this is just the one way of looking at the four noble truths. There are some other ways. It's like a diamond. When you look at diamond, you see one angle shining one another, you keep looking. It has multiple facets and the teachings become more and more clear as we look at the teachings in a different different way. Whenever you feel suffering, first make the recognition. Whenever you feel suffering, first make the recognition. There is suffering. Then it should be understood. And finally, it has been understood. This understanding of dukkha is the insight into the first noble truth. Correct, uh, suffering is there in war and we cannot escape that. But the wars arise due to delusions from greed, from hatred and from delusion. So in Buddha's teachings, that's what we try to reduce and eliminate. Eliminate greed, you eliminate war. Elimi- eliminate hatred, you eliminate war. Eliminate delusion and you will eliminate war. So um, the wars start with a person's greed, hatred and delusion, which is what the Buddha's teachings are about. To eliminate those things is to eliminate all the suffering in the world, not just the war. The family wars that people have in their families. The relations, the country, the civil war within a country. The wars with each other country. Everything um starts with each individual and their greed, hatred and delusion. So as far as um, you were saying, you are unhappy, correct? With the war? But it's inevitable. When you have unenlightened people running in the governments, in the military, um, then of course you're going to have greed, hatred and delusion. And so wars will arise from either one of those things. And as Buddhists, we try to eliminate all these wars by developing ourselves. Each one of us contributes to this uh, um elimination of war. So when the society becomes more and more enlightened, wars become less and less. Otherwise, there has been wars since time immemorial. Wars have come from, you know, way past. So those societies that have a lot of greed, hatred and delusion, they create a lot of wars. Those societies where there is less greed, hatred and delusion, then there is peace and uh, well-being. There is meditation on loving kindness. There is a meditation on loving kindness which we do that spreads out throughout the whole universe. It's the Buddha's words on loving kindness. And it starts with us. Us means as individuals. We uh, think of something positive. May I be happy? May I not suffer? May I be successful? May I be enlightened? Anything positive? Um, may I be free from anger, free from hatred? Or may I be um, you know, peaceful? Anything positive that you can think of? You can say that to, you have to direct that. So you visualize your face or yourself first and send that to yourself first. And then when we have done that, we can look at our spiritual teachers who have helped us with the Dhamma and visualize their face and say something very positive. Direct your thoughts, because thoughts are power, thoughts are energy. And we radiate these thoughts towards our teacher. May my teacher be happy, be successful, be enlightened, of course, um, fully enlightened, may um, may he live long. Something that you think is very positive. You direct that energy, that flow of thoughts, that flow of vibrations. Um, they are waves of energy that you vibrate towards the person that you, uh, the teacher that you see that has taught you that you have confidence in. So you start with yourself, then the spiritual teacher or religious teacher, and then you go to your parents, father and mother, if they're alive or um, and then you say the same thing to them. And then you direct it to your siblings, brothers, sisters, wife also, of course. And um, to, to your friends, relatives and friends or to the friends and relatives, whichever you prefer. And slowly to you extend the intensity of your vibrations or your thoughts of loving kindness that you are radiating. You extend that to your neighbors, to your town, to the city, to the hall of Mexico City, the United States, throughout the whole world. Of course, to the animal realm, to the animal kingdom, to the animal world, pets, cats and dogs, elephants and horses. So you try to extend this loving kindness towards slowly to the other countries, to your enemies also eventually, throughout the whole world and throughout the whole universe. The planet Earth, you know, you can see it as a whole. And then through the whole universe. So in that way, you are generating positivity within yourself instead of complaining. And you are fulfilling uh, one of the seven factors of enlightenment. You are also benefiting, you know, in multiple ways. You become a personal, uh, personality, attractive personality. You know, your complexion brightens. Uh, you sleep well when you, when you have this state of mind that is called the loving kindness state of mind, then you sleep very well. You don't have sleeping problems. Some of the athletes I teach, athletes, they have sleeping problems. And so, you know, they have to, they have to practice this. When you uh, when you do the loving kindness, you wake up refreshed. Because the state of mind is very energetic, very positive, energetic. You look forward to the day. It's not like, oh, another day, another dollar. It's not that mentality, you know? You don't feel sluggish. You, the mind is not sluggish, the body is not sluggish. You have a lot of energy. Then you don't have nightmares at night because your state of mind is of radiating of loving kindness. So you have bought the beautiful energy with you. And then uh, uh, you create a positive condition so that, you know, uh, calamities like sometimes fire, poison, weapons, they don't, they don't cross your path. And you become endeared to other people. You become very uh, endeared to your coworkers, to your family members, to your relatives. They all gravitate towards you. And uh, your body and mind in terms of medical condition is more stable. You don't create uh, like stress and heart disease. Everything that um, that works in your metabolism works very well because you are radiating this beautiful state of mind. Your face also starts radiating energy. It becomes a radiant. So in this case, um, loving kindness benefits you internally and it benefits externally. It benefits you externally because people um, gravitate towards you. People become more nicer to you and people become friendlier.
Thank you.
Right. Anybody else that have suggestions or want to answer questions that Letty asked? Letty, right?
May I ask for a special request? Since you bring up the loving kindness and um, uh, perhaps if you can help uh, chant the loving kindness, a brief blessing for the ending of this um, session so that there'll be more loving kindness for ourselves and for others. And maybe the issue of the war that was brought up, you know, maybe perhaps uh, receive the vibration from the Mexico City uh, group jointly. If I may ask you for maybe a brief chanting of the Metta Poena, perhaps? We can uh, jointly take merit together.
Yes, Letty. Okay, so um, this is the Buddha's words on loving kindness. This is what should be done by one who is skilled in goodness and who knows the path of peace. Let them be able and upright, straightforward and gentle in speech, humble and not conceited, contented and easily satisfied, unburdened with duties and frugal in their ways, peaceful and calm and wise and skillful, not proud and demanding in nature. Let them not do the slightest thing. Let the wise would reprove, wishing in gladness and in safety. May all beings be at ease, whatever living beings they may be, whether they are weak or strong or meeting none, the great or the mighty, medium, short or small, the sane and the unsane, those living near and far away, those born and to be born. May all beings be at ease. Let none deceive another or despise any being in any state. Let none through anger or ill will wish harm upon another. Even as a mother protects with her life, her child, her only child. So with a boundless heart, should one cherish all living beings? Radiating kindness of the entire world, spreading upwards to the skies and downwards to the depths, outwards and unbounded, free from hatred and ill will, whether standing or walking, seated or lying down, free from drowsiness. This is said to be the sublime abiding by not holding to fixed views. The pure-hearted one having clarity of vision, being freed from all sense desires, is not born again into this world.
Thank you, thank you.
So this is um, the Buddha's words on loving kindness. There are some others passages that we use as a meditation. This is one of them. And by ennobling your states of mind, uh, it brings a lot of happiness. And one learns to let go of so much negativity. So I think we should, we will close this session today. Any more questions or think about some questions that you, you know, you'd like me to talk about more? But we are going to see the Four Noble Truths in many different ways. This is just one of the ways we are looking at. But there is other ways to develop the Four Noble Truths, understanding of that and looking at it. Correct, yes, there is um, uh mindfulness of the ball. There is, um, uh, mindfulness of the body, mindfulness of the breath, mindfulness of death, mindfulness of feelings. Uh, there are different meditations because in the Buddha's teaching, we see that there are six types of different human characters. You know, some have intelligence, some are faith-based, some are based like this. So, there are different characters. So, we use all these meditations of different characters. Some like it like that, some like, you know, mindfulness, some like breathing. So, we'll look at it, uh, we will, we will start doing something. We'll talk about that. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. See you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the, thank you for bringing us together. Thank you.
Uh, like, like Nam Pad said, hasta la vista.
Hasta la vista.
Hasta la vista. Bye.
Bye-bye.